We're on the air, all right. Welcome to this meeting of the Farmington School Board. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let me get my bearings again. The first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at the items that have been submitted? And are there anything to add or raise questions about? If not, can I get an approval to approve the agenda, a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Coletta. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Excited on the agenda is good news and superintendent update. So right over to you Superintendent Berg.
Awesome, thank you Chair Christensen, members of the board. Kind of an exciting time of the year for some people. For some of the kids, maybe not quite as exciting as the impending beginning of the school year is nearing, but I wanted to give an update just kind of on some of the back to school stuff and beginning things that we have on, but also prior to that. I believe in July, I talked and shared with the board about the Esser summer camps that were planned and going to be run during the month of July. So the money that we received during COVID through from the state and the federal government came in multiple buckets, and one of the buckets was specific to summer funding. And so our community education staff worked with staff across the district, put together a number of one day or two day type camps that kids could attend free of charge. And what they ended up putting together was 86 unique one day camps based on all sorts of different things. And a lot of it had to do kind of what they thought what they thought learners might be interested in, but also what staff would be interested in and kind of the passions that they had. And in the month of July, those camps had 1,574 enrollments in grades one through 12, and that was 606 unique users that were registered and took part in those programs. And probably the neatest thing about it is there was a significant number of learners that this was their first camp experience. There was no cost, there was no barriers. And in talking to community staff and some of the staff that ran the one day camps, it was just the excitement and joy that the parents had, but the kids had for being able to do that for the first time. So I don't know if we're going to be able to continue that in the future. We'll try to figure out some more ways that we can make some of those things more affordable. But the one day camps were just a really neat way introduction to give kids that opportunity. Our fall sports and activities started a week ago Monday. We had 11 of them. So football, girls volleyball, boys soccer, girls soccer, boys cross country, girls cross country, girls swim and dive, girls tennis, debate, marching band, and fall cheerleading all kicked off. And I always kind of put in our Friday notes, we have a bunch of these unofficial start dates to the school year, and that is one of those unofficial start dates when we get a majority of our high school learners back in the building partaking in that. And we actually start competition this week, so our girls tennis team starts and they have the first competition tomorrow. And then our marching band is going to be performing at the opening day of state fair this Thursday. So we're kicking into it. To be honest with you, if I had had my way, we'd just probably start school and we start fall sports and then be done in the middle of May. I think the world would be a lot better, but we don't get to do that. So it's the one official start. And then kind of my next unofficial start is when we introduce and welcome in our new teachers to their onboarding, and that started today. So we welcomed 36 new certified staff. They did a bunch of different district things today. We shared our strategic framework, gave them lots of different opportunities to interact with that. And then our teaching and learning staff spent a significant amount of time with them working around student, you know, kind of student centered learning, competency based learning, and how to work and integrate web depth of knowledge into their instruction. And then we have a number of additional back to school events taking place. So August 24th and 25th, and then also on the 30th, elementary schools will choose two of those days to have their assessments and open house for learners and their families. And one of the things that's happened over the last couple of years is we've extended those times, so families can have more time to meet with, to meet with teachers and school staff in tour those. We've gotten feedback that at time, those can be a little bit overwhelming when everybody's in the building at the same time, and to give people more opportunities to connect and share about those learners, we've extended those time. Farmington High School has their scheduled pickup day, the 23rd and 30th. Sixth grade orientation web day at Bachman and Dodge is August 25th. Bachman's having their schedule picture day open house on the 30th. Dodge actually had theirs last week. FHS has another kind of backup scheduled pickup day on the 31st. And then Dodge has another kind of open house on September 1st. And then the first day of school is September 6th. And high school does things a little bit differently, and maybe Kennedy and Michael can talk a little bit about it, put them on the spot. But that's our, the link day at the high school where it's just ninth graders and they spend the entire day kind of orientating them, getting them hooked up with Link Crew members and mentors, and getting used to kind of what life is going to be like at the high schools. That's a big transition from the middle school. So that's kind of a general up to date where we are with things. And when we come back in September, we'll have a lot more information to share on kind of the first couple of weeks of school. So thank you.
I almost hear gravel in your voice like you may have been talking a lot today.
I had a couple of almonds before we started. I should have swallowed prior, so unfortunately. But I am excited today. I mean, I, one of the things I really enjoy is welcoming back the, or not welcoming back, but introducing the new staff. It's just a great opportunity to kind of connect, and a lot of them have done a lot of work on us as they've investigated if they want to be part of our learning community. And, you know, then it's a chance for us to even connect that more strongly with kind of what they thought they were getting into. So it's just a fun time.
Awesome. So on to our updates from our student board members. I don't know, Michael and Kennedy, if you've flipped a coin over who starts, but feel free to take over.
I can go. I can talk a little bit to what Superintendent Berg was talking about with the high school and how they accept freshmen in. So I'm a part of Link, and that's a very big thing. It's basically a whole weekend of training and then one day where it's just every single ninth grader in the building, and then about 100, a little more than that, upperclassmen, giving them a little tour, kind of walking them around, showing them what the high school's like, just to minimize it. So when the first day does actually come, it's not so much of a horrifying, I'm lost, I don't know where to go. It's just sort of a, oh, I've toured this with someone who I think is cool, in big air quotes. But that's, yeah, Link is very helpful, even when I was in ninth grade, I think most high schoolers can attest to, Link being very helpful. Back to what I actually had prepared. This summer has been very, one of growth for the school district. I know from personal experience that the coaching staff in this district have put on JAKs, which is an hour and a half fitness, high intensity training. Ends about early August, but goes through June, July, early August. Coaches, when we were ending it, were very, actually very thankful because it was what they considered to be the most commitment, most growth that they've seen out of a, out of a summer that they've seen. So that's very beneficial. Really shows that our athletes in the district are actually really committed into their sports, but they're also maintaining their education very well, I would say. This summer also marks multiple new additions to the high school campus. There's a new permanent ticket booth on the home side of the stadium, which will be very nice, very much an upgrade from the little shed we had by the gate. And they're also throwing in a new athletics building by the school, but kind of by the home side of the gym, home side of the stadium, I should say, in the high school. That'll be used for athletic storage and I think on away team locker room. I could be wrong about that.
I got that.
Yeah, it's addition, not just for the high school, it's storage, outdoor storage for the district and then a team room and some things. So, yeah.
Yeah, they've been working on that this summer, so that should hopefully be ready. If not now, then very soon. And then with the summer coming to a close, the football season's just around the corner. And with that comes what every high school student lives in fears for, the themes for every single football game. They've recently been, they've recently put them up. They've been, they finally released it, the dossier.
I want to hear more about the fears.
Yeah, oh, yeah. And that's, the biggest fear is picking the wrong theme and going to the wrong game, which
Oh, got it.
Which is quite a fear. So, yeah, that's on, that's on the Tiger Den Instagram for those of the students who kind of want to plan ahead, and the parents who want to double check that their student is wearing the correct color for the correct day, because I didn't realize, I didn't realize that, and if my mom would have checked, that would have saved me a lot. With that
What about you, learned a valuable lesson?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And now I check it religiously.
Wow. Hi, everyone. It's really sad to see that summer's almost over, but it's also kind of fun knowing that we're going back to school soon. At the high school, we were recently able to collect our yearbooks. There's also some more with the scheduled pickup days from last year. It's really cool to see how much time the yearbook staff puts into our yearbooks. We kind of get to see the highlights of the year. And I know some people wonder why the yearbooks come so late, and they can include things like prom and all of that. So it's really nice to see all of that in the yearbook as well. Now, as Mr. Berg mentioned, some activities have started up for the fall season. Now, there's been a lot of crazy weather this week, and I want to say congrats to all like the athletes and people who still went to their practices and things, rain or shine. I'd like to add that it's awesome Farmington allows all these things to happen for all these students. Now, another thing, students of all grade levels are able to create these connections over the activities that they do and the sports that they play. With one of our biggest events to bring everyone together is homecoming. Our homecoming celebration is already on its way in late September. From Spirit Week's coronation to the parade, homecoming has it all. Every year, there's a special homecoming T-shirt that is sold from everyone to parents to students. If you're looking to purchase a homecoming shirt this year, brought to you by the Farmington Student Council, they'll be available starting when school starts, and you'll, they'll only be able to, they'll only be available to purchase for about a week. You can find more information to come about homecoming and the T-shirts at Farm Town Studs on Instagram. Be sure to show your Farmington spirit. And lastly, good luck to all the students that are starting school soon. From the first day of kindergarten to the last day of senior year, or really anywhere in between, the most important part of school is to be sure they're having fun. This year is your year. That's all.
Thanks, guys. The next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. The consent agenda is made up of routine business items that can be acted on with a single motion. And if any board member wishes to discuss an item, they may request that it be pulled from the consent agenda, and it will be acted upon separately. Does anyone have an item they would, that they wish to discuss?
Chair, I'd like to pull item number F, item, item F, not number.
Number F, letter F, yes.
2022, 2023 student handbooks for discussion.
Okay, we'll pull those and put them into the agenda immediately after approval of the consent agenda. I think that's usually how that works. I don't know if it has to go at the end of the agenda, but I think the important part is it just acted on separately. So we'll go ahead and do that. Are there any other changes to the consent agenda? If not, can I get a motion for passage of the consent agenda with item letter F removed as requested by Member Simmons?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Coletta. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The consent agenda is passed. So on to that next item, let's, let's just go ahead and move into our agenda item around the student handbooks.
Okay, thanks. So I realized as I was reviewing the packet for this evening, and that included the handbooks, that it might have been more helpful to have it as a work session topic. But just a couple of comments, and I already shared this feedback with Jason, but thought I'd open it up in case there's anything others wanted to add as part of that, as the administration and building teams take a look at it. So I, I as a parent, new parent to the district a couple of years ago when my first went in, the handbook was like my go-to for learning everything I need to know that I felt like I shouldn't email the principal and bother her about. So I think many parents really appreciate this. I think it's a really good communication tool to help give people a sense of what the culture is in the school or philosophy, make the connection between even our district overall mission and goals to the building, and then how does that look for your child in like the tangibles and the logistics and day to day. And so what I just, what I noticed and shared, shared with Jason already was that there was quite a bit of variation between the handbook. So, you know, for example, in the middle school ones, the Dodge one is 108 pages and the Bachman one is 24. So we have two middle schools, so a lot of variation in what those parents would be getting as they'd be looking at. And similar with the elementary schools, right? Just difference in kind of what's included. So some, and so some of the ideas I had were just, again, around things that we've talked about as a board where there are opportunities for some consistency and communication around that. And so I just shared that with, with the team. And some of the things that I tried to call out that I thought were really nice, especially in the elementary ones, but I think in all were things, some of them called out like, here's the role of the principal, here's the role of the assistant principal and staff, and then role of the family. I thought that was really nice, because again, as a family member, as I'm looking and thinking like, okay, what do I do or how do I get involved? Some of them had volunteer opportunities, like how do you get involved as a parent? You know, if it's individual questions or feedback, call, call this person, start with a teacher. Others had like volunteer, here's your PTP contacts. So some of them had link, like full policies of our district in there, which I thought, I don't know if that's a great idea, just because we might be reviewing policies or it might end up outdated. So maybe a link to relevant policies. You know, I know bullying is often one parents are really interested in reading. So some of the most common ones with links, that way if they're updated as part of our processes yearly, parents are getting the current ones without having to revise a whole handbook. So anyway, just wanted to call it out of our consent agenda tonight, aid to tell parents, if anybody's watching, to take a look at those, because there is a ton of great information in there, and then just see if, if there's other things that fellow board members found really helpful for their kids' handbooks or things that, you know, we might want to just use this opportunity, give feedback before the school year starts for, for our admin partners.
First, I guess I would say those are really great callouts, and thanks for, for bringing those out of, out of the agenda. I don't know if the other, if Rebecca or Jaclyn have comments or anything to add otherwise.
I feel the same that you do, just pointing that out and calling it out to see what, how we can make that better.
Okay, are you good?
Yeah.
Okay. Jason, is there anything, I mean, it's, these are, I think going out to parents probably the next couple of weeks, but is there something that from
On the website, and
Yeah.
The reason for a lot of the variation is because buildings share out information in different ways, and it probably is already accessible on the webpage. And so it's usually housed things that are required, you know, and there are some board policies that are required in student handbooks and things like that. So, yeah, we, Lisa and I talked about this week, talked over this weekend, figure out what we can do to maybe streamline some of that stuff, specifically around, you know, our strategic plans, some of those things that are going to call out, kind of share and provide some of that. And that's another thing that we're working on with our communication generalists. Each building, we have one left.
Jason, your microphone.
Sorry, 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 sorry. I had it on earlier. So it, I had it on and I turned it off. It's like muting myself in a Zoom meeting and stuff. So we're also working with Sally to get the building strategic frameworks updated on their website as well, so they're accessible and connect to our things. So I think that some of the information is good. You know, I guess ultimately it'd be awesome if people access those the way that you access those. I think our general experience is, is that they're not accessed that, and people find other ways to get information. And I think our administrators have tried to figure out what's the juice for the squeeze of those sorts of things. But I think we can, we'll certainly figure out ways to, you know, maybe unify some of those, so that there's a similar look and feel to those. It probably won't be, get done for a while, but I think that's some feedback that we can take and try to figure out how that it kind of looks the same, similar through those. So
Yeah, I really appreciate that. And, and to your point, right, especially the longer they get, very few people are going to read page by page. But I think it's nice how you kind of describe, even the collection or links to things like competency based framework, or if they can find it elsewhere, just knowing where to go, so that as a parent you can see, what should I, I might not know what questions to ask, but oh, what's this competency based learning thing? So I appreciate that.
It's just another opportunity to house things and stuff. And so, like I said, we, I know Lisa took a look at some of the stuff, and it sounds like that there's some other things too that we can look at, so.
Great.
If there's ever anything you need from the board in, in that review, including, I suppose, the community engagement work group or anything like that? Just, I know you know how to bring it to the agenda and to the attention. If that's it, can I get a motion to approve the student handbooks for the elementary schools, middle schools, and high school?
I'll make a motion to approve the student handbooks for this year.
Second.
Motion by Simmons, second by Coletta. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. Under the rest of our agenda, the next item is approval of, is administrative action, so the approval of updated adult meal prices and milk prices. Finance Director Huska.
Good evening, Chair Christensen, board members, Superintendent Berg, members of the community. Thanks for having me here tonight. Earlier this summer, I had brought forward lunch prices for the 2223 school year. Unfortunately, MDE came out with their own little calculation of what adult meal should be after they already kind of told us what we should do. So we need to make those modifications because our prices weren't at the minimum prices for adult breakfast and lunch. So we do need to make a modification for our adult breakfasts to be $2.25, and our adult lunches need to be $4.95.
Are there
And I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Can you just refresh our memory what that adjustment was from our original one?
Oh, I'd have to look. I didn't, I'm sorry.
It was pretty minimal, if I remember right.
Yeah. I want to say we were like $4.85, something like that.
Thank you.
Yep.
And this affects adults only, right?
Adults only.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, can I get a motion to
Make a motion to approve the resolution providing adult breakfast at $2.25 and adult lunch at $4.95 and milk at 50 cents for the 2022-2023 school year as presented. Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Simmons. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Our next item is a resolution relating to the election of school board members and calling the school district general election.
So, yeah, so if you recall, you know, prior to the filing period, we had a resolution that basically set the filing period. We go through that process. We had eight community members step up and put their names in during that time. I believe they have two days after, they have two days after where somebody can apply and then pull their name. We did not have anybody do that. So we are set with eight people that have come forward to be part of that. And then basically, this just sets the general election for that.
All right. Any questions or comments? All right. Seeing none, can I get a resolution? Or, yeah, a motion? I'm getting all mixed up.
I'll make a Go ahead. I'll make a motion to forego the reading and adopt the resolution relating to election of school board members and calling the school district general election.
Second.
Motion by Simmons, second by Doyle. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. The next item on our agenda is policy action. There's a number of policies that look like they're to their third reading. This is, who's, is this to you, Jaclyn, or who?
I wasn't at this one, but I'm, I mean, we've talked about these twice already, and I think it was just all, any changes were just from MSBA, and they were all like kind of general
I remember the work session, it was typographical for most part, right?
And then there was nothing that came out of the work session to make any additional changes or anything, so.
All right. Can I get a motion to pass these policies?
I will make a motion to adopt policy 205, open meetings and closed meetings, policy 209, code of ethics, policy 210, conflict of interest, school board members, policy 211, criminal or civil action against school districts, school board member, employee or student, policy 212, school board member development, and policy 214, out of state travel by school board members.
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Coletta. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. You know, I didn't want to say we'd be out of here by seven, because I thought we would, I would jinx the, the whole meeting, but like, we actually might make it out of here by six.
That's what happens.
We had a very short, straightforward agenda, so I guess our next item on the agenda is really just board remarks. I'll start with Jaclyn.
Okay. It's crazy that summer's over, really, and it is over to me. I went back to work too, so I can sympathize with the teachers in the district that are coming back. It is bittersweet. We get excited to get new students and new classes and get to work, but also sad that we don't get to sleep in anymore, and now we have to know what day of the week it is. But that's okay, that's what we do, right? And welcome back and thank you to the staff that are returning and that are new employees. It's an awesome school district, and I look forward to seeing and hearing all the great things that we do. Thank you to all the cool kids at high school that help with the incoming ninth graders, because, you know, everybody has to start somewhere, so it's nice that they have kind of a buddy in the school from day one. What else? Thank you to all the individuals that put their name on the ballot. That in and of itself is a commitment to just put yourself out there and open yourself up. I encourage those candidates, if you have questions, you want to know about the board, reach out to members, you can email all of us. Come to the meetings, right? If you do get seated in January, it's good to know what's going on, specifically our work sessions, because that's where all of our deep discussion happens. And then I also encourage the community, like I always do, to do your due diligence and meet the candidates, learn about them, see what they're all about, and what's best for our community. Is that all I got?
Thanks, Rebecca.
I second what Jaclyn just said about the candidates. Thank you very much for stepping up, and please feel free to reach out. I think we're all more than happy to answer any questions and meet with you. Thank you, as always, Kennedy and Michael, for your wonderful school updates. You bring that excitement right now, and I can see it in your face, you're just so excited for school to start. The one thing I'm really impressed about is I have been consistently coming to the high school this summer, and I am so impressed with the buzz at the school. Every day, there's kids and parents, and it's just, I guess I didn't realize how active the school is during the weekdays, especially in the summers. It's very impressive. So that's been exciting. Those kids are going to say, what'd you, you know, what'd you do with your summers? Oh, I spent throughout the high school. So, and also, Kennedy, I have to clarify, homecoming T-shirts are at Farm Town Studs Instagram? Okay, just writing that down, because I didn't hear the Instagram part. Thank you so much to the district staff for working so hard this summer and getting everything prepared for the students and staff to come back. Absolutely love our district and so proud to be a part of it. And I'm impressed with the marching band, Mrs. Holmes and Mr. Mariska. I don't know how they can take that many kids in such a short period of time, especially a lot of the band, marching band members that are new, and create this ensemble that they do. I am so impressed with that. It's just been an interesting ride to see. And they are marching, the marching band is marching at the state fair this Thursday, 2 o'clock. And if you are going to be at the state fair, anybody watching, please wear orange and black if you've got any, just to show support for the band, we're really excited to see them march. the band, we're really excited to see them march, I'm excited, um, not so much my son, but I'm going to be walking with the band, spraying them with water as they march, so paybacks are just horrible, um, just kidding, it's going to be fun, um, just super excited, um, for all the activities to come back in, homecoming, I couldn't believe farming, or football starting up, so, there's just a lot of buzz, and so it's an exciting time of year, so.
All right, thanks Rebecca, Michael.
Oh, okay, uh, okay, um, I just want to, I don't have much to say, I just want to echo Member Coletta about, um, the use of the high school and everything, I think it's really good that the district is really utilizing all of the spaces, all the equipment we have, and not just letting it sit in the shed or sit in a classroom for three months, I think it's very nice that we're tr- continuing to be engaged in student lives and also the community as a whole.
Great, Kennedy?
One thing I wanted to say is it's funny, I'm sure that you, um, started on the other side, this, this meeting.
Trying to throw you off.
Yeah, I was like, we were like, whoa.
I'm unpredictable.
Yeah, so that was, that was fun.
Let's just spice it up, you know, get really wild.
But I also want to say, um, it's really cool to know what the new construction around that side of the school, um, that Michael brought up, and that's being, that space is being used for something more than just grass, and kind of just cool updates to all the places around Farmington, that's really cool to see, that's about all I have to say.
All right, thank you, Member Simmons?
Okay, so, um, just to, uh, emphasize the importance of the school board election, as has previously been discussed, in addition to appreciate the candidates who, um, are willing to run and join us on this team, I think, I, anyone who's listening would just encourage you to talk to each other too, I know I learned so much when I was running about misunderstandings about the Board of Education, when I started talking to people, some thought that each school had its own board, um, you know, they didn't know that it was on the backside of their ballot, their school board, they didn't understand that, while like the federal elections kind of get all the fame and fortune and glamour, that it's really your school board and your city council members and your county that, that has the most impact on your day-to-day life as a family, on your taxes, on your, on, um, you know, kind of what, what your community is, and so, take the time to talk to each other, ask people, um, ask one another, you know, what they know about the election or, and, um, Board of Education candidates and others too, and just take the time to look at your sample ballot, that's available online, um, you can vote early too, any one of us would be happy to help, so don't, there are no dumb questions, um, and please don't hesitate to let any of us know if you have any, um, really excited to welcome back staff and students this year, um, I don't know about anyone else, but this is the first year since my children started school that there is not this heaviness, like going into this year, just, and, you know, a lot of worry and concern and fear as parents about what's this going to look like, and how's it going to impact my kid, and, and, and all of us, and similarly for our, our staff and our administration partners, and so, um, on, you know, as part of that, I just want to thank Jason for your steadfast leadership over the last two years throughout this pandemic, um, I think Kyle had pointed out that your contract is three years, and the first two years you really spent just helping keep the district's head above water and helping, just keeping things normal, and so, I'm really excited to see what we get to do this year with, you know, people feeling excitement and energy and looking to those, you know, really incredible aspirations and visions and things that, that we have as a district that makes us really unique and sets us apart, so, thank you, um, and then going on that to thank all of the admin team for your work through the summer, I know that we had a lot of out, outside the norm, um, hours, and board members too, thanks for just doing things like retreats and being open to talking about, you know, what are some things that we could be doing better and could strengthen our operations and help, you know, help us function better as a team and help us make stronger connections with the community, and I know that people had to take time off work for that, or work really late, or work extra outside of the regular things you're doing, so, I just really appreciate that. Um, want to thank the Kid Connection folks who, uh, watched so many community kids over the summer, and all the daycare kids, but, uh, or daycare providers, but Kid Connection had some really fun things that they put together this year for, um, for the kids there, and just appreciate their, their, um, you know, their excitement and help with, with, um, providing that, that support and meeting that need in our community, and finally, um, just want to encourage people as we go into the new year, it's, it's really exciting, I know families have a lot going on, but, um, we often talk about the challenge of connecting with families when, um, on a more regular basis, so that it doesn't feel like a surprise when things come up that they care about, or, you know, we've been talking about this as a board for eight months, but it feels like it's sudden to the community, so, um, I just want to remind people that our, the legislature last year did not decide what to do with the budget, with the budget set aside for education, and so that will impact our district and our decisions moving forward, and so, be on the lookout for things that we'll be doing as a district, we will of course always do our best to, you know, communicate that in multiple avenues, through the website, through our, um, own relationships and social media and things, but please, please be looking for that, because we will want your input, and that will impact us, and we don't want it to feel like a surprise, we want to, um, have the con- conversation ongoing, um, in two-way, um, so please, please be listening and looking for that and talking to your friends and neighbors about that, thanks.
Thanks, um, I'm not sure what I'll add that's new, but I'll try. Actually, talking about the business, all, all the business going on in the facilities in the summer, Jason has brought this up in private conversations a couple of times, but the high school, the middle schools, and some of our other facilities, they are de facto community centers for our school, and I, it's one thing to kind of always kind of keep, I was actually, I spent a lot of time on the fields there myself, I coached baseball this summer, so I was on FHS one, uh, probably two or three nights a week there for a while, um, picking up kids from JAKs, uh, you mentioned that, uh, my, my kids are getting healthier and stronger, uh, in the summertime, and, uh, actually had a few meetings at the, at the school too over the summer, um, so I mean, it is, there's constantly activity going on at those, and it's a mad, it's an incredible value, uh, that the community is invested in and that which this district continues to deliver back, so I think that's, that is important to, to draw awareness, so it's not just the school, and it's not just what goes on in the summer, I mean, those things are being used all year long from, you know, whatever, seven AM until eight, nine PM or later, right? I spent a lot of the winter coming to basketball practice at the school too, so, um, so that's just, anyway, that's just great, thanks for bringing that up, and it's, it's good stuff. The election, it is great to see that there are so many candidates, um, interested in running for school board, um, I, I make a joke with my friends, you're, you're talking about not knowing like what school boards do and whatnot, but I make a joke that if you know who your state representative is, you're something wrong with you, but actually the reality is that's the ideal situation, because the best government is local government, and everything goes up from there, um, and, and I also have learned so much over the past couple of years, thanks to Jaclyn and Rebecca and Steve and, and Melissa before she left, and hopefully, um, I will do my part to pass that on to others who are joining, um, uh, the board over the next, the next year, but, um, you know, it's important to recognize that, you know, just putting your hat in the ring is an act of, you know, it, it is courageous, so, um, thanks to all those who've, um, who've, who've put their hat, who've, yeah, who've, who've filled out their application, and I wish you good luck in the next, what, eleven, twelve weeks, um, something like that, between now and November eighth, there's a lot of work ahead of you, and I hope that you really take the time to learn as much as you can about the district, about school board operations and this community, because what you learn will be surprising, and it's also, um, sometimes concerning, but almost always, um, positive, almost always positive, I learned a great deal about, um, just the, the nature of this, this town and this, this area, um, through my, through my election, and it's a, it's a rewarding experience no matter how it all ends up. Any others have mentioned the warning track, this is the, the two-week, uh, poll, I know that the, the new teachers joined today, and, and, uh, yeah, so they're, they're all starting to learn, kids, uh, I, I actually had this lecture at least three times in my house today, uh, get up, get ready for the day, go outside, you've got two weeks left, and suddenly your schedule's not yours anymore, and, and, um, my, uh, my eighth grader is a web leader over at, at Dodge this year, um, and so I'm pretty proud of him, he's got an, uh, an active week ahead of him, um, and so anyways, as you said, it's really exciting to see the confidence and sure, sureness, surety, uh, there's probably a word in there someplace, but I think the, the point is, um, there's great energy coming into this year, and, and I'm excited, Jason, that you get to focus this year on the things that you care the most about, so, that's, that's all I've got, um, thanks for listening to me, reiterate some, and hopefully add a few of my own notes to, to the day, um, with that, I think we just need a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at six oh seven.
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Simmons, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.